All right, now we're ready. The meeting will be recorded again today, which I think is a good idea for transfer of information and transparency, so that's good. Commissioners, I think the manager's got some things for us. Anything anybody wants to say before we get started here? Well, then, I guess I'd just say our new zoo director's here for the first time to visit the meeting, Jeff Welber. He said all the animals were fine, they were staying cool, and making more animals out there, right?[36.54][36.54](laughter) That's what the zoo's about. So, all right, well, anyway, glad you're here and hope things are going well as you transition back to Wichita. Mr. Manager, I think we'll toss the ball to you.
All right. First, we have Karen Page, who's gonna talk about FBI export plan. Everybody know Karen?
We do. Hi, Karen. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
So apologies for the formality for this informal meeting, and I always am a little nervous when I come here, but I'm really nervous today because there's a lot of people I know and a lot of people don't know. It's a full room. It's a full house today.
But, I mean, don't worry about it. I mean, I'm nervous, too.[84.22][84.22](laughter)
I don't know about you, Commissioner O'Donnell, but whenever I present in front of people I really know, it's more difficult than, you know, strangers, so. I know all of you so well. Commissioner O'Donnell, it's the first time I've seen you at a meeting. It's really nice to see you again.
Do I not come normal?
No, 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 it's my fault. I just haven't been here before.[104.54][104.54](laughter) I've seen you, of course, but not as a Cedric County Commissioner. It's good to see you again. So, let's get started. I was given the opportunity to present an update on the export plan, and since we have new faces on the commission and I think on staff as well, I'm gonna do that, but I'm also gonna give a little bit of background about how we built the export plan, so we're all on the same page. And if you would do me a favor, if at some point you think I'm being repetitive, or you're like, "Okay, skip over that," just give me a signal and we'll skip over that part. So, here we go. So, we're gonna start out with some background, again, because there's new folks. Why export? And if you've been, if you've heard me speak before, or if you've been in these discussions before, it's something that's quite obvious, but it's not obvious to every person. And we didn't realize it wasn't obvious, because for us, we deal with trade every day. We found out when we started building the export plan, that it wasn't obvious why we should be doing exports, why we should be encouraging more folks to export. So, let me just tell you a little bit, the simplest reason why. Exports for a company means more sales. More sales, I think all of us would agree, is a good thing for companies, their health, their financial health, which then hopefully leads to increased jobs and a healthier economy. So, exports simply means more sales. Now, the truth of the matter is that most companies in the United States don't export. Most of them don't export, probably because they aren't in tradable goods and sectors, meaning they don't have a product that's exportable, either a physical product or a service product. Even the companies that are in the tradable goods and sectors, they, tradable goods and services sectors, they don't export it. Majority of them don't export either. Stunning, right? Because it would seem like it's an obvious, like more sales is a good thing. That's because most of the opportunities are outside the United States, as you would think of for exporting. And so, just give you some statistics up there that we tried to put in a little bit fun way. I know that all of you have seen me over the years. I hope that you approve our improved visual presentation, instead of just a bunch of numbers on screens, where we're trying to make it a little bit more palatable. Pun intended on the pizza graphic there. So, here's the facts. This data is from 2015, I believe, so it changed a little bit. But the entire global market, so this is the whole opportunity, is almost $78 trillion. $78 trillion that our companies could possibly have access to a portion of that. When you look at just the North American and South American continent, so, you know, all of this portion of our continent, you're looking at about $26 trillion. When you look at the U.S. only, it's only 18. $18 trillion is still a big number, but compared to the others, you can see that there's a gap there, and that there's opportunity for expanded sales. So, why do we have an export plan? If it's so obvious and the opportunity's so big, why then do we have to have an export plan? Why? I mean, if companies can do it already, they're already doing it. We're a great exporter. Why? We're really focusing on small companies. Now, we don't deny services, nor ignore any company, any company of any size, but we really focus our services on small companies. And the reason is, is small companies have exactly the same challenges as large corporations, but they have less resources. And when we say resources, we mean less internal capacity, less internal capability. There's less staff, and maybe no staff that knows how to do international trade, or that knows how to export. So, in general, these small companies that have the greatest opportunity, and the small companies are also the ones that aren't exporting, for the most part, they don't have the internal resources to do that. However, we can help them build it. What we did was, we looked at what they needed. So, not enough resources in a small company, not enough resources in some companies of all sizes. So, what kind of solution did we put together? So, we understand, this is very overly simplified, we understand that we had to have a total solution to help companies export more. And it really is consisting of three parts. We need funding partners, which the Cedric County has been very gracious to be one of those funding partners since the very beginning. We need experts in certain trade areas, we call service providers. They could be CPAs, or specialty international attorneys, or other consultants. It could be freight forwarders, so, any kind of service providers. And we need working partners. And the working partners are folks like Greater Wichita Partnership, for example, or the Chamber of Commerce, or Mid-America Manufacturing Technology Centers. So, people that already exist, organizations that already exist within our community, that have skills and services that you can then apply to solving the export problem and making it grow more. This is a little bit more detailed model of how we're building an export ecosystem. So, you probably just heard me move from exports, I'm supposed to be here talking about an export plan, but now I'm talking about an export ecosystem. This is really important, because this is how you actually move the needle. You can't build an export, you can build an export plan and implement it, and you can do it really well, but unless you have a total system to actually help the companies at whatever they need, then you're not gonna see the needle move, the export needle move, as quickly as you would like, or as effectively as you'd like. The reason this is, is because exports happen inside a company. Inside a company. They don't just happen in a vacuum. They don't happen at, you know, some external place. They happen inside a company. And for a company to export or sell more to foreign customers, they need all kinds of services that aren't particularly or specifically related to international trade or exports. So, those include, it could just be, maybe they need help with taxes, and it could be domestic taxes. Maybe they need help with messaging or marketing. Maybe they need help with working with their local government. They need all kinds of things that we run into when we're out talking to a company. We do not shy away from, nor do we turn away any company, when we go inside a company and we say, "We wanna help you increase your exports," and they say, "Hmm, not really ready for that, because I have these other problems over here." We actually help them, usually by referral, or by solving problems to help them with that company, with that particular problem as well. So, a little bit about the trade expertise and resources. And this is gonna sound a little bit like bragging, and a little bit, in a little bit way, it is, because you have, we have a unique resource. We have this export ecosystem, we have an export plan in our community, and you have an organization who has specific skill sets that are needed in this situation. At Kansas Global, I think you might know me, you might know some of our other staff members, in the last year, we've actually gone to some trouble to make sure that you have the best resources that we can give to you. So, we have six full-time members on staff now, and five of the six staff members are certified global business professionals. So, that means we took an exam by a third party and got certified. So, we had to, you know, prove that we knew something. Then we also, we use external resources, and I talked a little bit about those already, but just to give you a little bit better idea, we have a mentor network that we're building, and this export ecosystem that we've been building includes all these, you know, different service professionals, and then all kinds of other folks we're adding every day. And it's not just local. It's regional, it's national, and it's global. So, depending on the resource that we need, we don't already have it in our network, then we'll go out and find it. So, a little bit of background, for those who may not be familiar. The export plan was not built by Kansas Global. It was shepherded, the process was shepherded by Kansas Global, but not built by Kansas Global. We had a 10-county region that over 100 participants gave input, worked on plan, came up with ideas, came up with strategy, came up with a goal together, this is built by consensus, that built the export plan back in 2014. It is evidence-based, data-based. The, and what I mean by that is, the data is used, provided by Brookings Institution out of Washington, D.C. It didn't use, they used Moody Data Analytics, they used U.S. government data, so this is data-based. And then we also went out and talked to companies and said, "What do you need?" Real simple, real simple. None of this is rocket science or all that complicated. So, when we talked to companies, we talked to over 23 executives in and around the region, so not just in Wichita or in Cedric County, we were all over the region. And we asked them, "What do you need? What's preventing you from exporting more? If we could provide a system for you, ideally, what would that look like? Really, what do you need to export more?" And they told us, and we recorded it all, and then we looked at what the patterns are, and then we saw what we could put together that might actually help. So, we, these were the three things that came up most, or that we, when we bundled all the ideas together, that we came up. They wanted one central resource for export help. They didn't wanna have to figure out who to call for what, okay? So, that became Kansas Global. They wanted the, not necessarily the companies, but the other folks in the total export ecosystem said, "We really need to outreach to companies directly in order to tell them about the export opportunities." All those small businesses that I talked about that aren't exporting already, maybe they're not exporting because they don't know, or they don't know where to start. Well, what if we just went out to them and tapped them and said, "How can we help you with this opportunity? Did you know there's an opportunity? Let's look at what you have, and let's see how we can help you to export." And they needed technical export assistance, because like it or not, exporting is not all that simple. It's not rocket science, I promise you. It just has a lot of moving parts, and you need some technical exports to help make that happen. So, what we came up with was one goal, four strategies, and five objectives. And the goal is to increase and diversify exports, and that's because exports in this area are dominated by aviation. I'm sure none of you are surprised by that. Overall, what we're trying to do is improve the global competitiveness of the companies that reside here, but also the region. So, that's the overall goal. Increase and then diversify exports, and then overall, you know, improve our competitive position. The four strategies are listed here. You see, the first one really addresses the export ecosystem. We recognize that we had to build something, it didn't exist. We had all the resources, but they weren't connected together. And then the others are listed there. So, these are strategies. This is how we make sure the plan is implemented. This is the how. The strategy is how. The objectives are listed there on the right side of the screen, and these are the measurable outcomes that we're looking at. So, these have to be quantifiable. So, strategies are how we're gonna get something done. The objectives are actually the quantifiable metrics that we're going to use to make sure we move the export needle forward. So, that includes increase of exports and diversification of exports, both. So, if you look at those on the side, catalyze export growth, that's increasing exports. You see, there's a specific objective that's addressing diversification of exports. We've broken it into two parts. One is non-aviation goods, and the other is all services. And that's because we're looking at the data, and we know for services that it's only about 15% of total exports of our region. So, we thought, "Well, it's only 15%. Maybe we can make that, may make that number increase a little bit, and also diversify the export profile in our region." Coordinate export assistance and promotional efforts, that also speaks to the outreach and the export ecosystem. And then the increased global fluency of the Wichita region. This global fluency vernacular is something that Brookings came up with, and I don't know if they still like to use it, but it's in our plan, so we still have it here. Really, what that means is, to be so globally competitive, it's just part of what you do every day. Fluent, as in a language. It's not something that's foreign to us at all. It's not something that we're afraid of. It's something that we embrace and we handle every day. And then increase exports of small and medium-sized companies. So, you see that focus right in there on the SMEs. Now, what you're looking at, the bar graph, is, for the export plan, it's a five-year plan, and we must report quarterly to our funding partners and our service partners. This is the quarter, quarter one, first quarter of 2017. And what we did was, we looked at the five-year plan, where do we need to be at each quarter with each of those objectives, and just translated them to a percentage. So, for quarter one of 2017, we should be at 45% or higher completion for each of these objectives. 45% or higher. And so, you see that bar there. So, you see, we're hitting all those numbers. Some better than others, but still, we're exceeding what those benchmarks are for each One of the things that we didn't address was how we actually measure an increase in exports. And we do it two ways. One is through the direct impact of the companies that we've assisted. Direct impact of the companies we've assisted. And how we figure that out is we ask them. We say, "We provided to you this service, or you received this grant, which you use to go on a trade show, or we connected you to a company that helped you do, solve a problem in exports. Did that have any results for you? Did you increase your exports?" And the companies that have reported, been able to report so far, and this is actually from last year, so the new numbers will be coming out in June, we do it about every six months, is about $24 million in direct new exports. So, they're not counting something they did before. They're counting what they increased as a result of working with the services of the export plan. The other way we measure is total exports for the region. And we know that needle is moving, but we didn't wanna be unfair in our assessment of our performance. And what I mean by that is, if we're just tracking the total exports, but we can't say we helped every company that contributed to total exports, then really, is that fair for us to say that if it increased or decreased, that we had any impact on that? So, this is why we look at the two measures. The overall, the big number for the region, and then these direct exports, to ask companies if we helped them. About a month ago, we received the Presidential Award for Excellence in Exporting Assistance. And what's interesting, and why you're seeing this today, and of course, we're proud of it, it's the highest award that we can achieve, excuse me, in the nation for export assistance. But the reason we're telling you this is because in the letter that told us that we had received this award, the Secretary of Commerce, Secretary Ross, the United States Secretary of Commerce, actually called out the export plan. They said, "You got this award, but in particular, we wanted to say why." And this is what he said. Demonstrated significant contributions to an increase in U.S. exports. The awards committee was impressed with Kansas Global's management of the Wichita-South Central Regional Export Plan and the organization's market research. So, they called out specifically this export plan. They're recognizing that this was one of the contributors to exports that, for our region, but then, of course, that goes into the nation. And I wanted to make sure you knew that, because I think maybe you all, like me, you just do your job, pat your head down and work, and it's hard to see what's going on from a distance, but this is something that we're proud of, and that everyone in this room should be proud of, in this region, because it was just recognized, our export achievements, together, were recognized by the highest level we can be, the President of the United States and the U.S. Secretary of Commerce. And with that, I'll end my comments and take any questions that you have.
Commissioner, any comment? Question? Mr. Chairman, have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask, you showed a slide that showed roughly $23 million in growth in exports from those that were helped by Kansas Global. You mentioned there was another number that you track, or you have that number, but I don't think you displayed that. Is that number available?
Excuse me, I didn't display it, and I apologize for that. That number is about nine, about eight billion now. Excuse me. And so, we check it overall, but it only comes out actually in June of each year. So, we'll have last year's number in June of this year. So, I know that's right now, but we have to wait for it to come out. But it's about, it's about eight billion now for the region. I didn't bring those, but I'll send them to you. I'll share them, I'm sorry about that.
You might be nice to see that over time, in other words, a trend line would be better than just a snapshot.
Absolutely. I just, actually just updated those numbers last week, and I should've brought them. I'm sorry about that. But I'll send it to Lindsay. I'll send it to you, so you can have that. And it actually shows, for the 10-county region, it shows for the MSA, and it shows for each county, a five-year trend, it's actually put a trend line in there. It's funny that you mentioned that. It's almost like you might've been watching me put this together last week. I know you weren't, but (laugh) but actually put it together. So, it's a bar graph, and it shows the movement of it. And it's interesting, because you can actually see us recovering from the recession, the exports actually track that pretty well. And it also shows for each of those areas, each county, the 10-county region and the MSA, shows the top five exports, it shows the total, so it's showing you the exactly information, and I'll send it to Lindsay, so she can get it to you.
Very good. Appreciate that. I'm just curious, I assume you're wanting us to support again this year? Is any changes in terms of who's supporting Kansas Global, and what your financial situation is in terms of our support, or who's the other people support, and that type of thing?
The answer is yes. We would love for you to support us again this year in the export plan implementation. And the second answer is no, nothing changes. The city is continuing to support. This year, we're getting the commitments, and when we say commitment, we mean, like we asked from Cedric County, is there a financial commitment to the portion of assistance required for a particular county? And we haven't seen any change so far in the number of counties. So, there's eight counties of the 10 who have now continued to pay their portion of the export plan implementation.
I'll just say, as a comment, and I think I said this to you before, I'm sure my colleagues have heard me say this or not, but I got my feet wet just a little bit trying to do international business with companies I work for, trying to fill out the right paperwork, and to talk to the right people, and get things approved, and I found that to be a very, very difficult process. And I'm not sure if it was on the other side of the ocean, if it was over here, but it seemed like both sides were very complex and very, very difficult to navigate. My takeaway was, this was, I felt like it was nearly impossible for a small business to navigate that, get that done. So, to the extent that somebody can explain that and help them figure out the process to be successful, to me, that's a, it's a pretty awesome service that would help small businesses. Otherwise, I think they'd just be, they would be unable to do that unless they were extremely persistent and had lots of lawyers helping them, basically. So, I appreciate what you do.
Yes. Thank you for saying that. And what we try to do is, what we found is that for small businesses in particular, I talked about the resource, you know, they don't have as many resources, but they're overwhelmed, as you described. They're just overwhelmed, they don't know where to start. And bringing in technical assistance sounds not very friendly, but our approach is actually to bring in technical assistance to them in a way that takes away the fear. So, it's okay, we're here. We have a whole team of people that can help you do this. You're not alone. You don't have to go this alone, and we need you to be persistent, but there's help for you out there, and we can connect those dots for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen, who defined the 10-county region? I mean, how was that determined? What if someone in an adjacent county needs help? I mean, do you help them?
So, this is a good question, and I'm trying to remember who defined it. We didn't define it. I think that we followed the lead of Wichita State University, when they were looking at the Innovative Manufacturing Community Partnerships Grant, if you remember that a few years ago. We got a grant, and then we were designated as a manufacturing community, which allowed us more, I don't know, preferred access to federal funds. So, I think that's originally who defined it. But in general, why it's defined is that 10-county region is, is looking at the human capital flow amongst the counties. So, just recognizing that, you know, it doesn't just happen in Cedric County, that we, you know, we recruit folks from Butler to work at our factories, for example, and vice versa. And then what happens if someone outside the 10-county region? Well, this is a really interesting question. So, the answer is, we don't deny services, but if they're not part of the region with the export plan for which we have funding partners, then they have to pay more for their resources. That's it. Because it's not, it's not fair for us to take the 10-county region's funding and export plan that you all have invested in and built, and then just disperse it across the state as if, you know, as if there was just, you know, free to the rest of the folks. So, we don't, we don't deny any services, but what's interesting about that, and I'm glad you asked that question, is, we actually would love to implement the export plan across the entire state, because we know it works. And it's honestly not that difficult, once you kinda have a formula, you know, once you have the model. And so, we've been talking to, actually, the state of Kansas about how we might be able to do that. At least, we have a contract with the state of Kansas, so we do the export outreach, and we do some of the connectivity for companies all over the state. We try to provide the total solution service to the companies, but if they're not in this 10-county region, then we basically have to charge them more. There's just not enough, and not as many resources available to a company outside the 10-county region. That's the fact. And the other thing that's interesting is, we've had companies, or employees from companies that unfortunately moved to another state for whatever reason, who have then called us from another state and said, "Can you tell me who the Kansas Global is in blank Texas, or blank Oklahoma, or wherever?" Because we need, we know those services exist, but we don't know who to call to put it all together. And the answer is, in most states, in the nation, there's not, there's not this resource here that puts it all together.
So, we're somewhat unique?
We are unique. We are unique. And I think that that's something we should really be proud of. This is not something that, so in 2008, former President Obama made an announcement to, one of his plans to recover from the recession was to double exports in five years. That's how Brookings got involved. They said, "Is that possible? Have we ever done that?" And that's when Brookings Institution started working with metropolitan areas across the nation. When they started examining this in 2009, 2010, no city in the nation had an export plan or a trade plan at all. None of them. Not one city in the nation, not the big cities, not the little cities, none of them. And in fact, most states don't have, you know, a trade plan, an export plan. And so, I think that just the fact that we're one of this 30 cities, that's a global city, part of the Brookings Global Cities Initiative, shows there is some differentiation in what we're doing here. The foresight that you all had, that you took, you took a leap of faith to do something new, I think it's starting to see, we're starting to see the dividends that are gonna be paid from that.
Okay, thank you. I'm surprised there aren't these sort of cooperative efforts all across the United States.
And about 28, 29 other, I can't remember if the number's 30 or 28, but, I mean, there's about, you know, 29 other cities in the nation where this is happening. I don't know for sure, so I'm a little bit hesitant to say this, Commissioner O'Donnell, but I talked to some of those other cities. We talked to them on a regular basis. And I don't see the robust or the total synthesized system that we have here. And J.P. Morgan Chase has told us repeatedly that we have the most robust performance metrics of any metro in the nation, and that they see the most, the strongest export plan. So, if they, if we trust that, you know, their observation is correct, I think that's a good sign about how unique it is.
Very good. Any other questions? I don't see any, Karen.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all for letting me be here. I just wanna mention to you that we provide the quarterly reports. All leads up into that nice bar graph that has the, you know, the meter we're looking at, but there's a lot of data in there that pulls up into that, and I'm sure you've seen it, or you will see it. If you have any questions at all, just let me know.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Well, congratulations on the success you've had. Keep doing more.
Thank you. Thank you all for your help, truly. We couldn't do without you.
All right, thank you.
Next, we're gonna hear from Linda, who's gonna talk about a new GIS app, so.
Good morning, Commissioners and others. You're so used to getting the tax foreclosure books. We have such a talented group of people that work in our GIS department, they've developed a mobile app. And I'm gonna let them demo it, but I'm just gonna talk real briefly. A lot of times, if you're going out to try to locate one of these parcels, it's a little difficult from the map, but with their application, we made it very simple, very user-friendly. I'm going to let Jennifer come up and just kind of show you how it actually does work. We do have a sale, excuse me, June 22 at the Extension Office. Check-in starts at 11:30, sale starts at 1:30. We started out with 548 parcels, we've had 445 redemptions through yesterday, so we only have 103 left to sell. And then our final sale, of course, is August 8. We do have a lot of different statutes that we do have to follow, of course, with any tax foreclosure proceedings. And we have an outside counsel that works very closely with County Councilor Yost's office and my office to make sure that we're following all the requirements of the law. And the mobile app is something that we're just going to add to it, just to kind of enhance it, where you can pull it up and actually see with the aerials, this is the parcel that I'm looking at, and you know it's a lot and not an inch and a half wide strip. We have that marked in the book, but a lot of times, people still bid on those properties and then they get upset because they haven't done all their homework, but I think this will enhance it quite a bit. And I know we want the technology out there, it's available to us, and we've got a great group of people. Wes, you are very, very fortunate to have these people working with you, because this is, once you guys see it, you'll understand why I'm so excited. Jennifer.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Chambers with GIS, I'm Senior Analyst there. Let me see if I can close her slideshow. The GIS Department is ready to launch a new web application that's designed to be a mobile solution for finding the parcels that are available in the Treasurers Tax Foreclosure Auctions. It's meant to be a companion to the mapbook that Linda showed you. And this new application will function on desktops, laptops, tablets, and smartphones. So that somebody out in the field trying to find it has their smartphone, can see right where they're at, figure out which parcel, because once they're out there, there's no parcel lines drawn in the grass for them, so. This will help them actually make sure they know which parcel is up for auction. This is the application up on the screen. It's just a link, a web URL. There's no download of any special application from iTunes or Play Store. The screen disclaimer comes up first with information from the Treasurers' office. There's a link directly to their auction website. They agree to the terms. This tells them how many. I guess I need to update one parcel. Linda said there's 103. We do get updates.
Another one, sorry.
Another one was redeemed. Okay, so we do get updates from them daily. To keep this always up to date, unlike the mapbook, once it's printed, if they're redeemed, they're still in the mapbook. This gets updated every day when they send us the report. I'd like to point out too, up at the top, there's also another link to the Treasurers' website, so that once they're inside the application and they want to go back to it, the splash screen's already gone, they can get back to that website at any time. So this is actually the tool, that's the foreclosure. It just is a click on and off. It tells how many parcels that are up for auction in the map view. So as you scroll in and out, that number will change. That's, I mean, they're pretty small here. There's a drop-down that lists the parcels. And a zoom to button with pop-up information describing some of the basic information about that parcel, anchoring the PIN numbers, AIN, GEO code, the various numbers used by Appraiser's Office, Clerk's Office, that references that parcel. It gives square footage, acreage, what city it's in, and legal description, some brief value information. So you can click off of it, click back on, pops back up again. I've added a link to the tax website. And this is, specifically brings up that parcel with any tax information. So they can see. I'm just going to go back here. There are search features. If you know from the booklet what the sale number is, you can simply type in that number. It searches on several things. Here is tax sale number 411, and it is actually in an area where there are several. In the mapbook, you would have a page for each one of them, but here you can see that there's many of them all in the same area. And there's some basic navigation buttons, home, zoom in, zoom out, you can use your scroll button on your desktop, back and forth. One feature is the My Location. This is where we are, and it will show anything in our area. If you want to find out if there's something in your neighborhood or in a particular neighborhood, if you're there on your cell phone, you can click the button, and the GPS on the cellphones are much more accurate than on your desktops. It'll show you where you're at, check the parcels in that area. Other ways that you can search are by a PIN number. Let's take this back in the same area. Like I said, the sale number. Here's one of the examples of the small kind of sliver parcels. It's a strip between two houses. I'm not sure, most likely owned by this house. Forgot to pay the taxes, they probably got two tax bills on it, and it's now up for sale. There's other layers, we call them, that you can turn on. You want to see addresses in the area. You want to see some parcel annotation, get the footage, lock block information. We have different base maps. The idea is that you can see the aerial picture, and it's really helpful to figure out where you're at, but if you'd like a different base map, there are several to choose from, including this one with topology. So you can see, there's going to be a big ditch behind this house, might not be as visible in this view. And I'd like to point out that the layout on the desktop versus a cell phone is going to depend on what mobile device you're using, what desktop, what laptop, and what model of that particular brand. So if you compare two side by side, they may look a little bit different on your cellphones. It's meant to be one, two click and there's your information. So are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Well, it looks like it's relatively easy to use, gives a lot of information, so that's great. And that's used primarily by the people who want to buy these properties.
Yes.
And there's 407, you said, have been redeemed?
Yeah, we have, we've had 400 and, too many papers, 445 redeemed out of the, starting out with 548.
So that means people got notice if the property was going to go to auction, the owner?
Yes.
And they decided to come in and pay all the back taxes?
They start out by paying just the oldest year before any publication, or the judicial case is filed, we just send a warning letter in August, which gets a lot of people in to start paying.
Typically, it's paid one year.
But once it's filed for judicial process, and you can, please correct me, Eric, if I'm telling this wrong, once it's filed in District Court, then they have to pay the fees and everything that goes with it. Before it's filed, they can pay the oldest year, fees and interest to pull it out for one year.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
I had someone ask me just the other day, and I guess I would like to just take this opportunity to ask you the question. So if one of these properties actually is sold and it's not challenged in court, so this sale becomes final and the money's transferred to the county, we assume we get our back taxes are paid first, but if there's surplus dollars, how is that distributed to other debts or other parties? Does equity go back to the owner, or what happens to the assets?
Yes, if a parcel, if the taxes are 5,000 and we sell it for 10, the other 5,000 goes back to the original owner. And that is all handled through District Court. They're the ones that actually, because they're the ones that are handling the case, they are the ones that disperse all that funding back to the individuals.
Are any of these properties, do any of them have like a bank that would have a lien on that property as well? Is that ever a problem?
Not normally, Jim. Normally, it's people that own outright, but we serve everyone that could have any type of interest in there, whether it's 10 different owners or a mortgage company or...
The banks will foreclose.
Right, the bank will normally. Or they'll pay it and then go back after the person.
Well, just a comment, I was told by this person that some states don't do it that way, that some states actually, the surplus funds goes to the county that sold the property and they keep that, and it's an issue in some states, apparently, and I think that we're doing it better if that's what is happening here.
And that would take a legislative change, but I don't know what kind of traction would go with the legislature on that. I don't have any idea on...
And I guess final question is, how do I get to this app again? I didn't receive the address on the screen. I can't find it on the website.
It's a link, it's not...
We haven't put it out yet because we wanted you guys to see it first.
It is ready, it's ready to go out as soon as the webmaster can get those links available. So with your approval, we'd like to move ahead with that, make it available to the public. It will also go on the Sedgwick County application and be available there. That might take a little bit longer to get that link available, and I can forward the links and have them directly to you to look at it.
So another question, the books that you publish, those are still for sale, I guess, if you can buy them? If they were having much of an need for them, do we have some statutory requirement to print those?
No, but we'll probably reduce our number that we actually print, because there are some people that aren't very technology savvy, that go to the sales, that buy a lot of properties, and so we'll just reduce our number of books that we're going to print. And we do sell these, we sell them for $10.
And that book is done about, what, four times a year?
Three times.
Three times a year?
Yeah, we have three sales.
The information on the app is always going to be up to date as much as possible. That's, I was going to say, I appreciate whoever developed this, the idea is tremendous. I appreciate the, I know some people who are very much into this world, and I have no doubt, I didn't know this was coming, but now that I know it, I think they're going to be very excited to see this, so thank you for making this happen and bringing it all together. It's like a really good app.
You're welcome.
All right. Got great people in that GIS Department.
Any other questions?
Commissioners, any other questions?
Richard?
Nice work.
Thank you.
I mean, it looks like it's straightforward enough, I could even...
I think, yeah.
I don't know, that might be a stretch.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. And Mr. Manager, what's next?
All right, there's the main two topics, but I do have time here if we wanted to revisit the discussion last week on space management. Looking for any questions, we have slides queued up if necessary. If there are no questions about that, that was the main three things that we had for you back.
Commissioners, any questions? I don't know if we gave you direction, but I mean, I think it's, there's a consensus that we need to move forward to the next step in that we'd like to have some solutions or recommendations that we could decide whether we're going forward or not. Right now, we've just identified a need without solutions, and so I believe that that's the next step, and I don't think there's anyone who's opposed to seeing what the recommendations are, so we tell you to move forward. Okay?
I agree.
Anything else then?
That's it, on my side.
All right.
I have one more thing.
Okay.
I spoke with Commissioner Dennis yesterday, and he told me he was going to be gone today on a planned trip of some sort, but he had a question that I told him, it'd be okay if I sent that question. He said, absolutely, it'd be great, so I guess I bring this question as well. I'll ask the question myself, but I know he's interested in this as well. Apparently, the aging folks had worked with IT at some point to develop some type of a user card or some sort of a senior, what would be the right word? You know, patrons that go to the senior centers, some type of a membership card that they could use when they use services there that would kind of track the usage of the senior centers. And I guess that Commissioner Dennis told me that that was on hold or is no longer being developed for some reason, and he would like to know if we can get that started again. Though we have a development group with IT folks, obviously, just developed this, I don't know if this requires any specific funding or just to have the project listed in their group that they continue to work, I don't, what is the plan on that?
That would probably be a conversation that Wes and I need to have. One of the staff that was a former aging employee, started that work and has since taken a promotion into Wes's environment and is now doing, working under the task, and that position was not replaced in aging, and so the resource isn't available in aging anymore, Wes and I probably need to talk about. I'm not, I can't tell you exactly how far along that project is, but Wes and I can have a conversation about where that's at.
But you guys do have some like, some guys that work somewhere, maybe not directly for Wes, but there's a group of guys that, or a group of employees that work on technological projects or whatever, that kind of develop these types of things. I mean, could that project be transferred to the group that the guy came from? Is there still people there that do that type of work?
I'll have to find out what still is involved and what we've got within the division, but Wes and I will talk to them after.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I guess my perspective is, if we had a better way of tracking the usage of these folks, it would be an advantage for us to have better performance measure data from the senior centers. I would think that'd be a good thing for us to be able to validate the importance of those funds going to senior centers, and so I think it'd be good data to have. But anyway, that's all I've got. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Just thinking, I think that's a good way, that's a good way to track them. I mean, I just think, and I don't like people tracking me very well. I don't like using cards and having them know where I'm going every time. I mean, maybe I'm weird, but I wouldn't want to do something that keeps people away. I don't like carrying around a card and having to stick it in everywhere I go and people know where I am and what I'm doing. It just goes against my grain, but...
One of the things that I think we discovered through that, as that project is going on, is that each senior center has their own culture, so to speak.
Right, right.
And some of them are more technically adept than others, and some of their patrons are more technically adept than others, and so that's part of the conversation.
All right, well...
We will pull that back out and have another, we'll look at it again and see where it's at.
Yeah, it's kind of like get these little apps on your phone where somebody can tell wherever you are all the time. I don't like that at all. I don't want anybody knowing where I am all the time, that's great. But anyway, some people are at work all the time. Yeah, that's right, that's it, that's the answer. Okay, thanks, Jim. Anything else? Michael, do you have any?
No, sir.
I guess I have one more thing. I did ask that, certain, I guess, Mr. Stolz, Mr. Spears, Mr. Manager, I'm not sure who else, but I have some concerns about the township roads out at Rockford, and I am struggling with the safety aspect, the public safety officials getting out to those areas that the roads are so bad at this point. There are some issues that I think that we've kind of crossed the line of badness that needs to be addressed somehow. And I know this is really not our jurisdiction, but I think that to the extent that my constituents out there are desperate and calling me, I think we need to have a different discussion perhaps. And I have worked with, I think it was Justin Wagner, I believe, spent a lot of time looking at different statutes and how some of those opportunities might be available either for the electors or for the township officials. I'm wondering if any of that applies, is anything I can initiate on my side? I'd like to look at those again and say, is there anything I can do to communicate with people and try to initiate some solutions? So I am officially asking for some additional discussion, perhaps one-on-one or whatever, to see if there's anything we can do to address some of these concerns. That's all I got. Thank you again, Commissioner.
Thank you. And right now, on our work with Citi in trying to resolve the question about emergency medical services, I mean, that's... medical services, I mean, that's, that is set now for the 28th.
Correct.
At, at 1 o'clock. And as, to our knowledge, we have had conversation and answered every question that's been posed, and, I mean, is there anything else we should do or could do that would help bring this thing to a good conclusion?
I think we've done everything. I'm actually calling Bob Lee today to follow up to yesterday, see if there's anything else that he needs. A lot of the questions that Commissioner Dennis asked after coming back from that meeting yesterday, we had answered, and it gave to him on Friday in our conversation with him. So, I'm interested to see where this goes today.
Okay. Well, I want us to kind of continue to be checking in with them, and we'll try to check in with electeds as we see the opportunity to not, not let this thing go cold. We need to keep it on the front burner and be ready to answer any questions, so we can resolve. Okay. Any questions from, or comment from staff? Anything anybody wants to add? Okay. You doing okay, Eric?
I'm great.
Okay. Glad to hear that. From our elected folks? Any more, Linda or Kelly?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there's no more questions or comments, we will, we'll be adjourned. Thank you all for being here.